We have a couple of goals tonight. But with me thus far is, let's see, my colleagues. Commissioner Mike Friend is back there. And I think that's off for right now. We have a couple more coming, but they'll be a little bit late. But this is the third of our four town hall meetings. And the purpose of these meetings is to explain to you and make you aware of a study that we did in terms of a mental health facility for Douglas County and for the services in which we provide. And so we're going to walk through the study. Both, there's two departments that we're focusing on, and they'll explain their pieces and parts to it. And then, once the presentation's done, we'll ask people just to comment, make a comment. If there are some questions, we may not immediately answer the questions because we want to hear all of the comments. But we can engage after everybody has had their turn to speak. And we will limit the speaking to five minutes. And so when you get to about a minute time left, I'll just say one minute, so you're not thrown off when I say time or the alarm goes off. But we are very, very excited, not only to explain and for to build awareness and educate you all on what we are doing, but also to hear from you. So with that, I will turn it over to Al Pabandra, who is a gentleman that we've worked with as the architect, who started to work with our two department heads from the departments I talked to you about. And they will again go through the study, Phase One and Phase Two, of which we are in right now. So without further ado, Al.
Thank you, Marion. Good evening. Great turn out. Thank you for being here. As Marion mentioned, we have done-- Oh, sorry. How's this? As Marion mentioned, we've been involved with Sherry Driver and Mike Myers since February. We did a study we called Phase One, where we met with them and defined the project. And I'm going to get into that in a second here. Just as an introduction to Douglas County facilities that deal with healthcare patients and inmates. Let me get my pointer here. This facility here is the Douglas County Corrections Facility on Seventeenth and Leavenworth downtown. It's had several additions. Latest was 2004. Mike Myers, the director, is going to talk about the situation in that facility. The other Douglas County facility is the Douglas County Healthcare Facility, which has been around for almost, I think, ninety years. And there's been retrofitted over the last thirty years, a mental health facility inside that. And so the consequences of having two facilities that really weren't designed for mental health facilities is in the situation that Douglas County faces right now. So today, we're going to spend about forty-five minutes talking about a brief introduction of where we've been and where we're going. And then Sherry and Mike are going to talk about a background and history, talk about the services they do, the number of both patients and inmates that are served. And then I'm going to come back and talk about where we're at in this second phase of the study, as far as the question of either co-locating services, combining the two programs that are involved in Douglas County right now, or having some. And we're going to try to explain where we're headed with that. So the goal of the study and the realization that we need to do something, that Douglas County needs to do something, is a potential creation of a new Douglas County Mental Health spaces based upon critical needs and evidence-based best practice. So in Phase One, I mentioned, we, which we completed in the spring, we basically sat down and said, okay, what are the spaces that you would need in an ideal situation to have the best healthcare practice? And we researched other facilities, and we talked through what they had and what they needed and created the space program. Phase Two, which is highlighted in blue, is what we're currently doing. As Marion mentioned, we are on our third or fourth town hall meetings. We have made no conclusions. We're introducing the issues and challenges that we have, and we're trying to get input from you. So this is a key part of what we're doing in Phase Two. Phase Three, which is probably going to be started next year if the county board decides to do something. And they can do nothing and just leave things the way they are, or they can do an improvement project or projects. So that's where we're headed with the goal of where we're facing. With that, I'm going to let Sherry take over.
Thank you. Okay, can you guys hear me? Okay, great. I am a little loud, so if I get too loud, just tell me that I'm screaming into the microphone. I will apologize for that. Okay, so my name is Sherry, and I am the administrator of the Douglas County Community Mental Health Center. And we are located at Forty-first and Woolworth. And as Al indicated, we are located in the Douglas County Health Center. Now, the Douglas County Health Center is ninety-plus percent long-term care. So we are actually, I'm going to go farther to say not even co-located, but we almost are co-mingling our mental health services in individuals who live in the health center. That's their residence. That's their home. So the services that were established for the Community Mental Health Center in nineteen seventy with a mental health center grant are located in a facility where individuals reside and live. So our services are located-- and I'm afraid to use this thing, so I'm afraid-- okay, here we go. So this is the main floor. And our outpatient clinic is located here in the main floor. And here's the main entrance. And this is our day treatment program. These other areas are health center services, pharmacy, central supply, security, and things like that. So that's a portion of the Community Mental Health Center. The second portion of the Community Mental Health Center is where our psychiatric acute care programs are located. These programs are located on the fifth floor of the health center, down a very long hallway. So we have a psychiatric intensive care unit, which is eight beds, that's located down this wing. And then all the way down this hallway through administration and support services is our general acute bed unit, which is also eight beds. So as you can see, there's some organizational difficulties with having your acute units separated from each other, also located multiple floors from your outpatient clinic. So when there's a code called, which is somebody's in acute distress, and we need individuals to respond rather quickly, those individuals responding are coming from security, which is here, our outpatient clinic here. So they're coming up the elevator. And then they're also coming from this unit onto this one or from our acute unit in our administrative area onto our intensive care units. We have had some renovations to our services. And we've moved several times throughout the building, being, as Al said, retrofitted into a long-term care facility. And then we also completed major renovations in 2020 to address issues which are called ligature issues. Ligature issues are situations where there are things within a facility that would allow for an individual to harm themselves or harm another person. So we have addressed some of those issues within our facility. This gives you a look of what some of our services look like. So here, this first one is our hallway that I was talking about earlier. Our intensive care unit is down this hallway. We have the long distance to travel to get to our other unit. Our units not located together is a concern for safety for our staff members and our clients. And then there's also some financial burdens because we can't share staff members. We have to have a certain number of staff members on one unit and a certain number of staff members on another unit. So if we had a possibility to create something where a unit had a hub, then we would be able to reduce some of the costs and increase safety at the same time for our clients. This is what our mental health sleeping room looks like. Some of the challenges with this, as you can tell, are acoustics. This is very loud. Both of our units are very loud. So if I'm in acute distress, maybe I'm having hallucinations. Maybe I'm extremely depressed. Maybe I'm, you know, there are circumstances in my life, and I start to escalate. This is a very loud unit, and it's not always the most therapeutic environment for the other patients that we're trying to provide services to. So we're working with Al's group to look at best practices and how do we create a more therapeutic environment for the individuals that are served here within Douglas County. This is our inpatient hallway here. Again, you can see with the tile that it's very loud. And this is our, kind of like a living room area or general area where we do groups, where individuals have their breakfast, lunch, and dinner. We have infection control issues. Those infection control issues or concerns that we have are the fact that this is a shared environment with a shared restroom and shared showers. When COVID hit, that was very, very challenging for us to overcome. We did have the ability to create one. We have one infection control room, which we can utilize if there's influenza, if there's COVID circumstances like that. But as you can tell, there's some significant issues within our acute care units. And finally, the thing that's most remarkable within the Community Mental Health Center, and it's been this way for many years, is we are licensed as a hospital. We have two acute care units. And then we have outpatient services, day treatment, and detox. And that's how we're accredited and licensed, is as a hospital. Our shared services are all provided by long-term care. Security, pharmacy, central supply, laundry, food services. Two very different populations. If you just think about pharmacy between long-term care and pharmacy between mental health and substance use, very different. Food services between long-term care, mental health and substance use, very different. Security that you would provide to those two populations, again, very different. We have our national accreditation come in. They said they've never seen, in all their years of accreditation, a facility set up like this where the support services to an accredited and licensed hospital fall under long-term care because they're so different. Okay. Here's a little bit of background in regard to the Community Mental Health Center and average daily patient load for acute care. And you can see those remaining fairly consistent. Oops, I apologize. Okay. I was trying to go to Mike's information. Now, one of the things that we have seen is when we started in 2020, our ligature renovations, we had one unit closed for six months, and then another unit closed for six months. So our capacity dropped significantly. Also during COVID, we have had a significant dip in all of our services, not just inpatient, day treatment, outpatient, and some of our collaboration with corrections as well. And so we're working on hoping that that trend increases and that we can begin to reach more people again. Our outpatient clinic, we have approximately eleven hundred individuals that get services, medication management and/or therapy services in our outpatient clinic. And the most recent year-to-date, we had eight thousand six hundred and sixty-seven individuals come in for services for that. That's a lot of traffic in and out of this building, which, again, I want to emphasize, is someone's home. That, you know, I think it's important for us, as the administrative individuals and our board, to really think about that as we choose to move forward or however we choose to move forward. Our detox program is located at a separate facility down near the Santa Francis House. And they had about one thousand three hundred and fifty-five individuals served in that program, or client stay days, actually. And then our just as involved individuals that we served is, the most recent is seven hundred and two. So you can see, we had a spike here in eighteen nineteen, and then we dropped down a bit, and then we're trending back up again for those individuals that we provide mental health services to that also have had a history of incarceration with Douglas County Corrections. And with that, I will turn it over to Mike.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Myers. And I'm the Director of Corrections for Douglas County. And I'll tell you, I'm going to tell you a little bit about our history of providing mental health services and how it fits in with our facility and what we hope to improve upon in the future. So zero square feet of the Douglas County Department of Corrections were designed to provide mental health care. The last addition, as Al mentioned, was completed in 2004. It was probably designed a few years before that because construction of jails takes a really long time. And people weren't thinking about this type of population coming to corrections. It hadn't been that prevalent twenty, twenty-five years ago. It's exploded, unfortunately, in the time since. Our, as a result, our spaces are not therapeutic. They're very institutional. As Sherry alluded to with her facility, they're loud, probably louder. Steel doors, concrete and steel, that's what jails are made of. And very intimidating environment. We do not have any spaces that are designed for the safe provision of mental health services that are also private. Our mental health providers onsite oftentimes have to talk through a doorway or through an open doorway with correctional officers present to assure safety. We have a lot of people who have come in off the streets. They may be off of their medications or under the influence of illicit substances. And they are very difficult to manage safely until we get them stabilized. So we don't have a space designed to both house those people and serve them with privacy and dignity at the same time. You can see on-- hopefully I will not mess this up either. It's complicated from all-- Okay, so the blue housing units are where we house-- all of those represent housing units where we house individuals with varying degrees of severity of mental illness. This whole portion of this, kind of from here over where these are larger units, this is the 2004 construction. Back here is the original portion of the jail, which was built in the late seventies. And then there's an annex that was built in the eighties. So the green housing units are where we house individuals, females, who have varying degrees of severity of mental illness. And most of these are basically step downs. Are some of our most severely mentally ill. If we can manage them in our infirmary, this is this area where there's three, it's kind of split into three. Are housed there. Housing Unit Twenty is sort of our maximum security housing unit. That is for individuals who are profoundly ill and also dangerous at the same time. And then Housing Unit Eleven and Housing Unit Seventeen are step downs from that. So I'll get into some stats in a little bit to put some numbers behind this. But you can see that 2004 addition, half of it is now dedicated to housing individuals diagnosed with mental illness. All right, just some photos. This is a cell in our infirmary. This is where, particularly if you're on suicide watch, you've expressed or by your history shown us that you're at a high risk of self-harm. You'll end up in our infirmary most of the time. You can see that cell is anything but what I would call therapeutic and healing. And then the next photo over is our medical infirmary day room. So you can see here, and this is actually our housing unit twenty that I mentioned, our management security unit. There are no spaces within these housing units for a mental health professional to safely sit down privately with somebody who is in custody but also is profoundly ill. And so a lot of the services are done right through these doors. That is the, that is what we're stuck with. That's what we, the best we can do with the facility that we currently have. Some of the other things, you know, we, you may have heard about mental illness being criminalized. And what we mean by that, there's two things. One, people who come to jail, they happen to have a law violation, but it was in the throes of a mental health crisis. And they're probably, when we, if we could distill that out, we probably would find that there was no criminal intent behind their actions. The other way we criminalize mental illness is by how long they stay in jail for the same types of offenses. So the blue lines are individuals who have have a serious mental illness or SMI. And the orange-colored lines are those who don't. This is actually better than the national average, which is approximately four times the length. If you have a mental illness, you typically stay in jail four times longer for a similar offense. That's because the criminal justice system is difficult to get out of once you're in. And especially if people are not deemed competent or are uncooperative with their attorney at the beginning because they do have, you know, they are psychotic and they aren't stabilized yet. That delays the process. And also finding community resources becomes a challenge to have that half as an alternative for these folks. So this is Douglas County data. And you can see that individuals with a mental illness stay in our custody longer than those who do not. So this is the percent of individuals with a significant or severe mental illness, I should say. You can see it's probably just slightly, on average, a little over twenty percent of our population. And I'm going to give you the raw numbers here in a moment. But it's a significant portion of our population. And this does not include more minor, easily managed, lower acuity conditions. These are people with psychosis, unmanaged severe bipolar disorder, and other, other conditions that are really inhibiting to their daily function. So about overall, if I include those folks who don't have a severe mental illness but have a mental illness, about forty-three percent of our individuals who are booked in have a mental illness. Of those, or a subset of those, I should say, as I said before, twenty-five might be slightly high, but somewhere between twenty and twenty-five percent of our individuals do have that severe mental illness. So I've been providing data at these town halls because, as Sherry alluded to, the pandemic changed everybody's data. It changed Sherry's data, it changed the jails' data. And every, I don't think there's anybody who provided any sort of service in any sort of industry that didn't have their data affected. So in the two years prior to the pandemic, we were averaging just a shade under twenty thousand individuals being booked into our jail each and every year. Based on our percentages, about eight thousand five hundred and seventy-four of those had a mental illness of some type. And nearly five thousand fell into that severe mental illness category. And during, during the pandemic years of 2020 and 21, you can see our numbers, our bookings went down. We averaged about seventeen thousand bookings. And our, our percentages of those with mental illness remain fairly constant, but they reduced in a raw number based upon we had fewer people coming to jail during the pandemic.
Okay, so what are some of the things that the county has done together, the Douglas County Corrections and the Community Mental Health Center, to address the issue that Mike just talked about? The growing population of individuals that are incarcerated that have mental health and substance use issues? In 2006, we developed the Mental Health Diversion Program. And to date, we have served six hundred and eighty individuals. Sorry. This program is one of the reasons, I believe, that our jail has individuals that have a lower average time incarcerated than the national average. Because we, we work with the judges to get individuals released and connect them to the services that they need for their mental health and their substance use. In 2010, we developed an intensive case management program for incarcerated transitional age youth. This program is fully funded by Region Six Behavioral Healthcare. And we transitioned this program to emergency community support in 2019. We have served seven hundred and fifty-six individuals in this program to date. This program specifically does in-reach. We work with individuals while they're incarcerated, and we provide them with that intensive case management, community support, warm handoff, all of those services that are needed for individuals to be successful once they leave corrections. And then in 2013, we developed an educational program that the Community Mental Health Center staff provide. And we go in and provide individuals with education to help them develop the skills that they need to be more successful when they leave corrections. In 2015, we were awarded a BJA Second Chance Act grant. We wrote this grant together. And this provides an intensive outpatient program. Now, what that program is, is it is co-occurring therapy for individuals. And they do group therapy and then for eight hours a week. And then they have one hour of individual therapy a week. Again, that's to address individuals with mental health and substance use, help them develop the skills. Hopefully, they will not relapse when they leave. And then also reduce the recidivism into the jail. In 2015, Douglas County joined the Stepping Up Initiative. In 2017, one of the things we saw as a barrier is that many individuals incarcerated needed to get into treatment. To get into treatment, they needed a chemical dependency evaluation. Very long waitlist for chemical dependency evaluations. So we have, we now have somebody who is dedicated to complete chemical dependency evaluations for Douglas County Corrections. Again, allowing those individuals to be released into the community into a program and treatment services and reducing the amount of time they spend in corrections. 2018, we received a NACO Achievement Award for being innovative. In 2019, we had the Stepping Up Innovator Award. And in 2022, yet this year, we are going to initiate a second intensive outpatient program, again, to treat individuals with co-occurring disorders within the jail. We have a significant overlap between our services. And that's something that Mike and I have really become to realize as being the, Mike being the Administrator of Corrections and since I've become the Administrator of the Community Mental Health Center. Mike's, Mike's population and the Community Mental Health Center population, we do overlap. And before I hand the mic off to Mike here, one of the things I want to say is the county board has a significant opportunity right now, once, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. I'm never going to see it again, to do something very innovative with best practices for the Community Mental Health Center and to do something for community services within Douglas County Corrections. As the Administrator of the Community Mental Health Center, whatever the board chooses to do, I am going to do the best I can do and the best that my staff can do to make sure wherever those programs are located, that they do the best they can do for the clients of Douglas County. What I am going to say, whether it's popular or not, I'm not afraid to have the Community Mental Health Center located on the same property as Douglas County Corrections. We have no intention of co-mingling our clients. Could we be co-located and provide better services to a Douglas County mandated population within Douglas County Corrections? A hundred percent, I believe that we could. I understand that that comes with a lot of concerns. But I am telling you, if a team could do this, it's the team that the county has employed right now. Because we're innovative. And we're going to do the best things that we can do for the clients of Douglas County. Mike?
Before I get into a little bit more of the extent of the overlap of our populations, on the previous slide, the, where is it? The...
Oh, Familiar Faces.
Well, there's Familiar Faces and, okay, I'm going to talk about the intensive outpatient treatment program for a second. So we started that in our community corrections building, which is adjacent to the jail, just to the north. And that has been a resounding success. Hundreds of people have stabilized their lives and moved forward with that program. What I think is really special about that program is it starts while people are in custody, but it doesn't end when they are released. It continues on for a period of at least six months of case management and other supportive services through the Community Mental Health Center. After they're out, and individuals voluntarily, this is the amazing part, individuals voluntarily continue to come back to the place where they were incarcerated, when they don't have to see us anymore. They come back and complete the program and complete the services. Some folks come who actually haven't been incarcerated and were referred from other sources and come to our community corrections facility to receive these services. It really is, when you think of your, whatever you thought of when you thought of a jail, you need to turn that on its ear when you think about that building and that program. Sherry mentioned the Familiar Faces program, I'm going to touch on that. And I want to acknowledge Vicki Makeup from Region 6 as, as our stepping up coordinator, who really helped pull several different parties together. And that program is small, but highly significant. And it involves a partnership between our mental health providers at the jail, the Community Mental Health Center staff, law enforcement, Medicaid managed care, and even pharmaceutical companies. And Vicki was the, the maestro that, that brought that orchestra together. And that program takes the folks who are most vulnerable people in our community. The folks who are chronically mentally ill and coming to jail a lot. The individual, to be, to be considered for that program, you have to have come to jail for at least, at least four times in the past year and have a serious and persistent mental illness. And we bring together all those parties to create a continuum of care that wraps around that individual and has had some life-changing results on a small scale. Our goal is to, for the course of the rest of our careers, is to grow that program. You know, we've seen what it can do on a small scale and it's life-changing. And we need, working together, we believe we can grow that very efficiently and bring together all of the resources at the table to wrap around each individual that comes to jail who's in these circumstances and help them build a better future. Okay, so we've talked, and I'll just touch on this briefly because I think you probably got the point. Sherry and I share a lot of clientele. During the pandemic year 20, of, of, year ending in June of 2021, we averaged 42 admissions a month into the jail for people who were also recent Community Mental Health Center clients. Prior to the pandemic, in the 12 months leading up to that, it was 75. So nearly three people a day were coming to jail who had also been clients of the Community Mental Health Center. And so that really drives home the importance of having that level of partnership and continuum of care.
Well, I threw Mike off a bit because I started speaking during his slide. And now, to get even, he spoke during my slide. Sorry, Mike. And he did touch on our Familiar Faces. The one thing I want to, I want to add to this is we served, I think it was eight individuals for that pilot year with intensive services. Their, their jail days, pre-being in the program versus post, were significantly diminished. The cost of jail, their jail stays for those individuals prior to being in the program was over $150,000. After being in the program was close to $50,000. That is extremely cost-effective. But really what's most important to me is those individuals' lives were much better after the program. I'm going to start talking on your slide again, this is you.
Sorry, we're a little off today. So, um, one of the, one of the things we included in Phase 1 is an option for the county board to consider is a collaborative resource space for both other Douglas County departments that could have an impact on what we're trying to accomplish and for community agencies. You know, Sherry and I are pretty proud of what we've done working together, but we also know that it takes a lot more than what we can provide. We can't be the one-stop shop for everybody in the community who crosses our path. And so we need to engage, you know, there, there are a lot of wonderful agencies and nonprofits and providers in this community that do exceptional work. And if we can have a space where we can engage county departments that can provide resources such as general assistance, our veteran services and our health department, and have a space where they can sit around the table along with Sherry's staff and my staff, and as well as individuals from the private sector, the problem solving that can happen on a case-by-case basis will be amazing. We'll have every, all the resources in the room to be able to talk about housing, medication, medical needs, nutrition, you know, education and employment, if we can get people to the level where they can be successful in those environments. So having that collaborative space, I, I think is one of the, one of the things that I really hope, I'll make my pitch to the board members in attendance, that I really hope sticks with the plan. Regardless of whether it's two separate facilities or facilities that are on the same campus, this, I think, is a very cost-effective and provides us the opportunity to create the most holistic and comprehensive solutions for folks that...
Thank you, Mike and Sherri. I think you can see their passion, the programs that they developed. Unfortunately, the facilities aren't following through and helping them out very much. So we mentioned that Phase 1 of the study was trying to develop a program, an ideal program. And what we looked at is a co-located, someone mentioned something about a co-located facility. A co-located facility does not mean that we are mingling in housing or any, any connection between an incarcerated mental health inmate or a community mental health patient. They would be completely separate, would not, never see each other. But there would be staff in between that would serve both. So there's some efficiency from that perspective. So we looked at an ideal space program. We ignored sites. We just said, okay, if we, we're going to build a co-located facility, where would, what would it be? How much would it cost? And just gave some rough numbers because we haven't defined it very far. So the size for combining the two programs with, with the program that we've established together was about a 68,000 gross working facility. I don't think it's going to be that big if it's co-located because I think it's going to be near some county services, and I'll explain that in a bit. So the, the issue of advantages has to do with the case that Sherry and Mike were making about combining the services. Cost-wise, it should be lower to build one facility compared to two separate facilities. And mostly because of, of sharing the programs. And that can be enhanced even further by location. And then the, the negative part of a co-located facility that we've heard is a stigma of having mental health patients and too many mental health patients under the same roof. Some would argue that could be mitigated by design and separation. Other people say that stigma is still there. And that's, that's the conundrum we're facing. And I need to be neutral about this argument because what I need to do is to try to provide, myself and our team need to provide the county board with facts of, of costs, location, staffing. The separate locations was larger because we had to have two new buildings. And again, we, we looked at a hypothetical site. And so we didn't look at any advantage of being next to a county facility. So the, the, the facility's bigger and it's going to cost more. And there's going to be some operational costs, probably more staffing because we're, we're not doubling up on some of the efficiencies of having the supporting staff of Sherry help with life operations in, in existing facility. But the public perception may be better. There may be some in the community who say, that's what I want. I, I don't want community mental health next to incarcerated inmates in, under the same roof, even if you're going to separate them totally. So that's, that's what we need to, to encounter and, and come to a decision toward the end of this, this study. I'm going to, I'm going to back up a little bit. And so the, the 42nd and Woolworth Avenue site, the Douglas County Health Center environment has a lot of Douglas County facilities. Not just to help the, the hospital. But it does have a kitchen. It has a huge maintenance app because it's kind of a central maintenance facility that's, that's there at this site. So from a, from a operational perspective, having a facility here has a lot of advantage that we can reduce the size of, of the ideal program because we can have some support services here. Similarly, at 16th and Lebonworth, there's, there's, there's a kitchen that, you know, serves nearly 2,000 people per day, three meals a day. And there are security staff here that can, that can come to the aid of any incident that would happen on the, on the detention, mental health, incarceration side of housing that we, that we manage here. So the support services of either, either site that the county has can reduce the size of the facility and create, create some efficiencies of not having to hire additional staff for food service, for, for janitorial service, for, for cutting grass, et cetera. So where do we go from here? What's our goal? Our goal is to have the best-practice mental health facility. And we, we're, we're looking, we're hoping to tour some facilities. There is a co-located facility up in, around the city of South Dakota, Pennington County. We, we're hoping to tour some of the best facilities in the world. We're actually in Scandinavia. We, we looked at some of their examples, you're going to see some of the photographs from there. But what we're hoping for is operational efficiency. We're hoping to have staff be able to, to provide care to, to mental health patients or inmates, but not having to go down long corridors or through, you know, selling corridors and things like that. So operational efficiency is one, one of our key goals in creating new spaces. And then clinical excellence, creating a positive healing environment. And I'll give you some examples of the contrast between Mike and Sherry are living with now in their facilities and where we want to go. And then the care experience, ensuring a, a care continuum. In other words, somebody is incarcerated in my facility, his time is up, he kicks out the door, then what? He's, he's, we talked about ex-sitism, they're, they're back in. There's no stepping down or programs that help them get back into the community. They have programs established that can do that. This isn't the design of the facility, but this is the kind of image that we're hoping for. A non-institutional, low-rise construction with bright open spaces and connection to nature. Biophilic design, having that connecting, giving power of nature, whether it's actually looking out into a courtyard or whether it's graphics inside the room. You'll notice that hospitals that you go to nowadays are really into having that type of graphics and that type of environment. So we talked about where are we headed compared to what, what we have now? And, and the living room, assessment room, patient room, having a blue calming room. Today's facilities still have their boundaries. But more than ever, there are less places of confinement and, and more places of treatment. And that's, that's what we hope to do with, with, with new facilities. So in summary, neither facility that, that we've shown today was designed for mental health care. And Sherry and Mike have a lot of programs that they work together. And hopefully collaboration, if it is a co-located facility, will reduce overall cost and increase efficiency. It's a real possibility. But there's a, a central question that we resolved during the course of the study is, is a careful consideration of all factors. We talked about the stigma, we talked about where would be located. We talked about staffing efficiencies, initial costs. All those things factor into where we're headed with, with a solution that the county board needs to decide which way they want to go, if they want to do anything. Whatever the final solution entails, current best practice facility design is, is what we're really hopeful to achieve. With that, Mary Ann?
Thank you, Alan, Sherry and Mike. And I thought I saw, yes, Commissioner Maureen Boyle has joined us. And I thought I saw, where did he go? Oh, there he is. Commissioner Jim Kamenoff has joined us. And I thought I saw PJ, but he might be coming a little bit later. But anyway, they, they have joined us. So then I thought, I forgot to tell you my name, I'm Mary Ann Borgeson. And again, on behalf of the board, we want to thank you all for coming to not only learn, but to provide us some comments of what your thoughts are. I'm pretty proud of our board taking on the mental health issue. It is an issue that affects so many things that we do in the county. Unfortunately, we can't address everything. But you can tell with staff that we have and with the board that we have together that we are really taking on this as a serious project to really try to make things better for those that are suffering with mental illness. And one of the things that we say all the time to remember is, mental health is health. And we can do better than what we're doing. It's not that our staff haven't done an amazing job where they are with what the resources they have, but our board has said we need to step up and see how we can do this better. And so again, I'm, I'm proud to, to be here tonight with them to, to explain all of this to you. And now is the time for you all to provide us with your comments. And again, if you do have questions, we will be jotting those down and may not get right back to answering them because we want to hear from everybody. But mostly just what your, your comments are about mental health in general or hopefully the, the project that we are presenting tonight. So with that, I have my trusty little alarm. And I will, do we have just one microphone? Mike will come around with the microphone. So don't be shy, he wants to go first.
My name is Mark Stiles, I'm a leader with Omaha Together One Community. OTAC is an organization of 26 member institutions, including churches, nonprofits located throughout Douglas County. For the past two years, OTAC has been organizing to better understand the opportunities and the challenges that exist within the mental health care system in the Omaha-Douglas County metropolitan area. metropolitan area. We have met repeatedly with all the Douglas County commissioners as part of our research, as well as private and public providers, our hospital systems, nonprofits, schools, and consumers. And we're here tonight to present our recommendation from that research. Now, in regard to the proposed projects, it's clear that there's two main concerns to be considered: cost and stigma. Understanding that there are pros and cons to both proposals, and following considerations has shaped our recommendations. Now, while these one-time funds, they are significant, it does not seem plausible that they will be significant enough to build two separate facilities. Additionally, the county is facing staffing shortages, which impedes their ability to operate at full capacity. Both the directors of community mental health and corrections have asserted that a shared facility would allow the two departments to share staffing and provide services to both populations more effectively. Now, in order to minimize trauma and reduce stigma to both populations, we propose that a co-located facility be built at the 42nd and Woolworth property that is currently owned by the county and is occupied by the Douglas County Youth Center. While building the co-located facility at this site may incur costs of demolishing the existing youth center, we also acknowledge that any site that is going to be chosen is going to require some preparation work before it's built. Building land on, building the facility on land that is already owned by the county will save a significant amount of money that would be needed to acquire property near the corrections facility in downtown Omaha. Additionally, building the facility near the correction facility, we think, will further stigmatize both patient populations, while building the facility in a health corridor is conducive to the therapeutic nature of the project, which we are attempting to achieve with a new facility.
My name is Moi Davie, and I'm a leader with Omaha Together One Community. Over the past six months, we have held over 60 meetings with a variety of officials from government, from the county government, all the county commissioners, several with the county government, hospitals, schools, nonprofits, and those in drug practice. There were three things that we learned out of those meetings. One, there is a need to expand youth emergency services in our community. The resources in our schools for mental health is deficient, and they need more resources, and workforce development. In all of the meetings that we had, we heard over and over that people simply cannot fill the positions that are open. There is a critical shortage of mental health professionals in our community. We even heard that the county community mental health facility was not able to run at full capacity because of the staffing shortage. With that in mind, OTAC is proposing, out of this $55 million that has been recently received, that 5% of that be set aside for workforce development. This would be devoted to one-time scholarships to those students that are pursuing degrees in the mental health field. The county would not incur any substantial costs in implementing that program, as we have educational institutions in the area that already have scholarship programs in place, and it would just be a matter of funneling the money to those institutions and letting them do most of the work. We think there should be emphasis given to, of course, would be open to any mental health professional, but we think there should be emphasis to those that are pursuing mental health techs, nurses, and particular priorization should be given to those students of color and those that are bilingual, Spanish-speaking students. Along with the county project that we just learned about this evening, there are a number of other things happening in our community. You know that there are funds being raised by hospitals and community organizations to build other facilities, which, and they're intending to expand their services. I believe the county is talking about expanding services, but they are talking about expanding their services, which means that there's going to be even more need for mental health professionals in our community. So, we feel that this is a critical need that needs to be addressed, and this is an opportunity to do it. So, to summarize, OTAC is proposing two things. We are supporting a co-located facility along the south 42nd Street portal, and we also would like to see 5% of this $55 million, roughly two and a half million or so, provided, set aside for scholarships to meet this critical need for workforce in our community. This would go a long way towards addressing the stigma issue, as well as providing the critical need for healthcare professionals in our community.
Thank you.
Not with any particular root here as an individual, as a person who has experienced being a client, as the term, as a patient when I was a backer. I think it's important to hear from somebody who firsthand has knowledge of what it is to be in a mixed public and inmate facility. You can't solve two problems with one fix here. Public community and inmates alike need urgently need facilities, help and care. However, community clients and inmates are two very different groups, although they can sometimes go into both facilities. I know it's believed that there are synergies by a common facility, even a common campus, if not in the same facility, and that you believe it's possible to design a facility with the proper policies and support for both groups, but you can't. Staff policy, excuse me, staff policy procedures have to work across the campus in those facilities. This means by necessity, and at the very least, clients will be treated with the same regard as inmates, by facilities, policies, and staff. Even under the best intentions for planning, policy, and rules, we are just one staffing and budget crisis away before community clients and inmates are treated as the same with the most restrictive policies and procedures. It won't be very long before community clients are mixed with inmates. It won't be long before apathy for inmates is inflicted upon the clients. And it won't be long before community facilities earn the reputation for being a jail. Then what? What happens to care when a person from the community comes in for help just to be treated like an inmate? You undo all the good, you accomplish nothing. Expectations for community care are lost. Just look at the history of the Lincoln and Norfolk Regional Centers, where patients and inmates were treated with the same inmate policies and procedures. To see the inevitable outcome of co-locating services on the same campus, let alone the same building. Inmates were mixed with community patients for cost savings. Even when those groups were not mixed, the inmate mentality took over the facility procedures. These facilities became warehouses with no regard to rights, care, and treatment for the community clients. I know, I was there. I have experienced firsthand what happens in co-located facilities. There was no care. Don't let this facility become another regional center. Needing mental care is not a crime. Keep community services far away from inmate services. Different facilities, different care, better results. Thank you.
I have a question for Commissioner Borgeson. Why is not the county board consulted with adjacent counties to consider building a regional mental health facility so that you can share costs with other counties?
We'll come back to questions, but just shortly, we are in conversation with other counties.
I'm going to work my way back.
My name is Angela, and I experienced a mental health crisis two years ago, so I have personal lived experience. I am a clinic nurse at the Omaha VA, so I have clinic experience. I am married to a deputy sheriff, so I have that aspect. And I want to tell you, I am excited for this. I truly am on all levels, both from law enforcement, hospital setting, clinic, and personal. Our mental health system, we're doing what we can with the resources we have, but as we know, it's terribly broken. And I think the more we can collaborate and combine our resources to make a better place, the better of people like me, people like you, that we're all going to be. And that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Cherry Lindbergh, and I live with fully and successfully the mental health challenges. Without the good services I've received and the understanding that these people have earned, and my own willingness to use skills, I would not be as appreciated and loved myself knowing that mental health does not define me. One of the most important part of hospital treatment is teaching skills to cope with mental health challenges. Environment that is conducive with empathy and understanding, and each of the consumer, each of them is worthy, and we are people, not a label or a behavior. Talk before tackle. Time is important for each consumer on one-on-one basis, not to be up and down always. In fact, isolation is not therapeutic, but I did see, I was impressed by the calming Lastly, I just want to say that we need to stop the revolving door. Anybody who's lived in the mental health system and/or add in, and I have been in the Norfolk Regional Center one time, that treatment keeps us from continue being patient consumers.
Hi, my name is Jody, and I just want to know if anybody in this room knows what happens when you have someone in your family who has mental illness, and it can be severe mental illness, and such a thing as putting them on the Board of Mental Health, and how the Board of Mental Health doesn't follow the group of anything, and how they tell the people that they are on the Board of Mental Health, they have to report to their providers to get their medicines and everything. But when they don't go to those providers, those providers are supposed to be responsible to report that back to the Board of Mental Health, and it does not happen. So, they're just left. Nobody cares. That's what it feels like out here, honestly. And I can't pronounce this word, but it's that anosognosia, and I don't know, but that's actually something, some chemical in your brain that makes you think that you really don't have a mental illness. So, what are we doing for those people? I mean, did you, did I misunderstand? Because how many beds did you say that you were going to have for severe mental illness?
That hasn't been determined yet.
But did you need to go amount?
How many did we have in the jail? Twenty-five, I think.
Well, actually, the jail, we preliminarily identified, I mean, for about 76 beds. And Sherry can talk better to the restrictions on the community beds, but there are federal regulations that I, on the community side, that I'm not the expert to speak on.
I just would like to add also, this gentleman here was talking about how many people are in jail and prison and things like that. Let me tell you the experiences of that. As a family member, I can call upon my family person and say, "Hey, this person needs some help here. Can we get him to the hospital?" Because they're losing it. And the police will come out, they'll knock on the door, he doesn't answer, they leave. Or he threatens things, he does, he's very vulnerable to society. He's gotten in trouble before because he was so vulnerable to society. Okay? And then, on top of that, we have to just let it go. Demands have to let it go, because police will not take that, because these patients have their rights. Okay? So, then, it comes to a point where now, they're in complete psychosis, and the police come out, and there's six cops surrounding one person, and they're tasing and everything. And how is that fair to a victim, a victim of mental condition, seriously? Because it's mostly through the genes. And sure, when you talk about drug usage and how it's both things, you know, mental illness and drug usage, you're right, but that goes hand in hand, because many people with mental illness use those illicit drugs to help medicate themselves, because they don't want to feel that way. And they don't want anybody else in control. Talk about guardianship? You can't get it. It's outrageous at Christ if someone's going to fight you. Talk about facilities that are already built hospitals? People have to sit in the emergency room for days upon weeks until there's a bed and a psych ward. And then, sometimes, which has happened, they get their medicine that morning, and they're gone by the afternoon. They don't even wait for it to get into their bodies and see how they're reacting. They have released him on the same day that he was taken there. And the nurse asked me, "Do you know what kind of meds he was on before?" That's the experiences that we're experiencing as families. I speak for many, because I go to many meetings where other families have mental illness and their families also. It's great that you're trying to do something positive. It's great. I agree with the gentleman up here in front of me about the stigma. I do. But I just, I just don't even know what to tell you, how it goes. I mean, I get their rights, but sometimes, I mean, it's obvious the laws have to change first. People would not be in your jails or your prisons if some of these laws were changed and they took up serious and held those people, worked so hard about it. I know my son even said, "Please don't put me in a car. Please don't put me in a police car." You know what? They called an ambulance, the paramedics came out, they checked him out and said, "Oh, he's okay. He can go in the car." How about PTSD? You know what I mean? These people are victims. They're not animals. It's sickening in this, in this whole world. I'm sorry. It's just sickening, because they didn't ask to be born this way. And as families, we're just barely thriving out here. And thank God that there's good places like Community Alliance, who should educate every single person, even, I don't care, I'm sorry, sir, but seriously, because they know the most about mental illness that I've ever known.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Oh, and sir, I remember the C I Ts come out and act like they're C I Ts, and they're not. That's how the police does us.
Thank you.
Crisis intervention.
I mean, it's over even, and here, on my own, I'm impressive how the OTAC people stood up when it's like you're alone. And I appreciate your passion, too.
I know, it is. I do get my passion.
I appreciate, actually, I appreciate what you're doing with the jail. My position here is, or experience is, I was chairman of Florida Mental Health for 23 years. So, when you started attacking them, I said, "Oh, please, please, hold on." And when you started talking, attacking the police, they had a tough job. We had something called EPC that would bring people before, before us, that this business about mental health victims, sufferers' rights, they were really serious. And we protected them on Board of Mental Health, and that we only intake people who were in imminent danger of themselves, to themselves, or others, so they couldn't take care of their basic human needs. And because everybody has these rights, and they are suffering a little bit, we only would take in so many, and I'd say about 800 at a time we would have under our care. And the ones that I really worry about, and I want you to think about, are the ones that we, in our own, I don't know, you get an insider jargon, we just call them frequent fires. They were the people who would come in before us and then stay under our care for years at a time. But they would be back name and time again, because about the best we could do for them is put them into some hospital, and they'd take them for 30 days for some treatment. And then, places like Community Alliance, you're right, they have the stalwart places and Stevens Center is one of the great ones for addictions. They're all over town, but you They're all over town, but you got to protect these people's rights. So we're only going to be able to take care of the ones who, I use the term, we call them frequent flyers, I shouldn't say that. But, but they were the ones that we didn't know what to do with. And my suggestion is that part of this situation we've got, I'm in favor of this Forty-second Street thing, is that we put together an idea that there would be, there would be residential mental health care of a long-term nature for many of the beds. And, you know, we treat these, we treat this issue as if everybody comes in, is all very wonderful mental health person who's never been to jail. Well, then, all of these people in jail, well, the jail, the jail system reaching out to all these people, I'm really proud of that, we didn't do that much. I haven't been on that board since 2015. We're really improving. The best I ever saw was Sue Murnan did dismiss a few cases to decriminalize a person and then we take care of them on the board and use, use this outreach around the community as best we could. But what we, what we were missing was frequent flyer who is desperate and needs long-term residential psychiatric care. We did not a lighter note about the problems of the police and the EPC. I was driving down Dodge Street one night, when I was in acting chairman of the Board of Mental Health. I see a guy on the interstate bridge climbing, curving back and responding up there. And of course, I had the personal experience of a young man who played football prep in Iowa State who liled down on the other end. Been in the EPC.
One minute.
One minute. Calm me down, two hours later, he jumped off and killed himself. So I pulled over and then I like called the police, nine-one-one, and I ran out there and pulled him down. And he wasn't there, I don't know, well, he wasn't down there in the highway either. He was sitting backward. I called the police when they showed up. I says, you can take him over to St. Joe on the EPC. And the guy says, oh, I think he's just drunk, I'll take him down to jail. Well, it sort of has, has a happy ending. I said, well, you just said, I'm chairman of the Board of Mental Health. That cop said to me, so, kind of like I just said, I'm the king of the sand. Two days later, and he had been taken to jail and they didn't, they didn't arrest, they arrested him, but they didn't charge him and he went free. So that was happening, but these things, these situations come up and they take time. A lot of them ask, okay, long-term residential care to the frequent flyers. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Becky. I agree with everybody who said. My son is currently in the system. He's, I took him to the hospital in December, this was his second bout of illness, he's been okay for a couple of years. Took him to the, took him to the hospital a couple of times in December, January, probably had to take him to the hospital again. He was in the hospital for a month. And the only way to get into the hospital for them to admit you is you, like he had said, you have to be a danger to yourself or you have to be a danger to others. So in the hospital, once you lie a danger to others, they take you to jail. And so, my son is in jail and he's still incarcerated. They took him six and a half months on a waiting list, I'm sorry, on a waiting list to be taken to Lincoln Regional Center. And that's where he's at now. During that six and a half months, he was in protective custody, he had a room, all by himself. I did have a contact with the jail. And from what I understand, he never came out of his room, so the hour that he's allowed out, never came out, he never called me. He didn't attend any visitation. I had no contact with him for six and a half months. He did end up with the Lincoln Regional Center. He's there now, he's very happy, he described, I'm sorry, described jail as hell, that he was in hell, he believes he was in hell. He lost sixty pounds during that six and a half months. And in the Lincoln Regional Center, what we're doing now is making him competent. Meaning, he's only, they're only trying to make him competent to go to court. They're not trying any type of other therapy or anything to make him better, just so he can go to court. That needs to be fixed. The six and a half month waiting period needs to be fixed. There's no reason that anybody should wait in a room for six and a half months to go to a hospital, and he went there from a hospital. And that's, I mean, and you know, there's a lot of, you know, the same question written all down, but I just, the six and a half month waiting period is just out of, is not right.
Thank you.
I'm gonna follow up on that, my man, this is kind of resident. Great opportunity right now, but can restorative services possibly be thought about in this new plan? Because they are sitting and LRC is jammed up. And they're getting those services and then our other Board of Mental Health patients who are jamming up our other hospitals, and it's, it's just a vicious cycle. So consider possibly restoration services in this plan. It's being done in other counties around the nation, and I think it'd be done here.
Thank you.
And also maybe some enhancement on pre-trial services to start them up front, get them supervised fully in the community, not just lightly, get services started. Then when they go to court, services are already started, better chances of, you know, having a better inmate out there in the community and our victims will be much more happy.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was looking to say, do you think that, I'm a mom of a young man that has severe mental illness and he started to go down the road of incarceration and thank goodness, we were able to pull him out of that and with a lot of additional support with Community Alliance and other people, we were able to keep them out of there on my request. I would request that they separated for the fact that they're, they're eventually commingle and maybe they were on that road in, in the drug scene of things. And if they're able to stay away from that, they can maybe stay away from the incarceration. But I totally agree, we need long-term residential housing. So many of our Section Eight housing and such, Medicaid, Medicare, et cetera, people are these people that are really sick that need further supervision and assistance, community assistance.
Thank you.
I'm Carrie and I have a history of working with Health Human Services. Is Vicki Nechek here? Okay, you're Vicki. Okay, I was trying to see if I recognized you. You know, you know my name, right? I'm, I'm here and we've got a bunch of money, it's simple, and how can we use it? We have these two facilities, two programs that are in need. But I'm glad that this woman is involved because Vicki knows the whole continuum of care across the state and in Douglas County in particular, and how very, very important it is. People are really mentioning all the little nuts and bolts that go into our continuum of care here and how sophisticated that was. And I'm glad that O-Talk has listened to all these different places and stuff, but I don't know if, if we did a check and balance of where all the places are and where all the holes are, if we're putting the money in the right places instead of community-based housing, counseling services, in-home services, someone to go with the police to, to deal with these kinds of things appropriately where the crisis is. I'm done, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm the father of a young man with severe and persistent mental illness, he's twenty-five. So far, we've managed to keep him in jail for the most part. However, there are too many loopholes in the Board of Mental Health, I'm sorry, there are too many loopholes in the continuity of care for these individuals where you get them into the hospital, the emergency treatment, they're there for, you know, a week, two weeks, you get them up to where they should be on their medications, but two weeks doesn't gonna do it. It takes three to six months. We need long-term care for these folks and there's folks, and unfortunately, Medicaid uses the exception in our current mental health laws, that if they're not moving toward their goals, making reasonable progress, Medicaid will loan them funding. The same, the same insurance companies use the same exception. They're falling through the cracks. Emergency rooms or the hospitals will screen them. Give them a cap there down to the homeless shelter. We need better services and we need to have long-term residential care.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, we've got a target.
My name's Ginger, I'm an administrator for a long-term care facility that chooses to serve those that have severe and persistent mental illness. We do not operate here in Douglas County. We actually have two facilities, neither are in Douglas County, there's a reason for that. And it's a good reason, it's nothing against Douglas County, we take most of our residents from Douglas County. I assisted the Douglas County Mental Health Center yesterday, I'm looking at two patients there. I attended all three of these meetings. When I first came, the reason I came is because I heard mental health is a certain misses in Douglas County. This was not what I expected, I didn't, you know, have really a scope of what this presentation was going to be. And I agree, there needs to be some changes to the mental health center, to the prison, to the idea that you have to go to jail to get help. It's not right. And I'd really, depending either way on how this goes, the reason I've come to this now, third meeting, and will be at the fourth meeting, is because I'm interested in what all of you have to say. And what I've learned is there are a few people that have an opinion about this proposal, but the temperature that I have gotten from all three meetings has been that there is no wraparound services, there's no long-term care for that. I am the administrator of a long-term care facility that serves the mentally ill, and I will tell you that the stopping shortages is no joke, the funding is hysterical, and we need help. I understand where the commissioners are coming from, saying they're doing what they can with what they have and serving the people that they can. And I think we're all in that situation, but I'm wondering, the thing that sticks out to me this time in hearing this, essentially the same presentation, is this space for the collaboration of those of us here that have something to offer and have the passion and the desire to help the mentally ill. And there's a lot of things going on, obviously, in a lot of little places. I operate and live in Cass County and we also operate in Gage County. So I don't have a dog in the fight Douglas County, except that, we have no mental health hospitals, hospitals or hospitals at all in Cass County. So where do you suppose our people come from? Douglas County, generally, or like Cass County. I feel like that if nothing else, whatever is decided here, whether it's brought upon by the commissioners or this large group of people that are here that I have never heard of, get together, I don't think we need the Douglas County building to provide a space, manage to find a spot to meet in for three meetings, that can come together and
Set our heads.
Together, and our resources together and actually serve the residents, not just of Douglas County, because when they leave here, they go somewhere else. And oftentimes, they don't return to Douglas County, generally because they end up out in Grand Island, Norfolk. There's, there's a need in the whole state, in the country. I understand we can only do what we can do with the people in front of us, but regardless of which way this goes, I think it's necessary to serve the mentally ill better anywhere they're at. So however this goes, if it does that, great. But for the rest of us that are here, I think that there's a conversation to be had, to get together, create whatever you want to call it, collaboration, to provide the services to the mentally ill that are, that are our families walking everywhere. You can't drive anywhere to Omaha and not see somebody suffering from a mental illness. So that's all.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, on behalf of the board, I want to thank you all for being here. And I'm going to go back to how I started and that would, we all know, and you all just told us again, there are some serious gaps and issues and things that we have to address when it comes to mental illness. We as Douglas County can't do it all. So we're trying to look at what we are mandatorily responsible for and what we're currently doing and how we can do it better. And it's not about the board, it's not about our directors, it is about the people that we're serving. And that's what I don't want forgotten in any of this conversation. I agree with the young lady who just spoke, that if this starts further conversation, I'm all for that. And I will tell you, Douglas County cannot establish a long-term care residential treatment facility. There's not enough money for that. But if collectively, we come together and go talk to our senators and say, this is what's needed, not only in Douglas County, but across the state, there's power in that message. And so, I'm not gonna speak for the board, but I can tell you, the board members would be very happy to have that conversation and add that as a legislative item to our agenda for this year or any other. Somebody else mentioned some laws that needed to be changed when it came to addressing mental illness. We've had various bills down in the legislature to try to change some things. We've had conversations about how to have a non-law enforcement response to mental illness. There's lots of things and lots of discussions, and you all being here tells me that you want to continue those conversations or come to the table and be a part of those conversations. And our board and our staff and our architect, because we're gonna throw him in there tonight too, we, we all, we all welcome that. I also want to say, another colleague, Commissioner PJ Morgan has joined us, if you can wave your hand, PJ. So I think you can see that the board is very serious and very passionate and we want to do things that again, are gonna make the lives of the people that we have responsibility for, that we're mandated to take care of, and again, that come to us for that help, we're trying to make their lives better. And so, together, I think we can do that. So again, thank you all for being here, and this will just say, we'll say this is the start or continuation of our conversations. So thank you.